Y'all ready to go? Welcome, everybody. Good to see everybody tonight. I'd like to welcome the one who's watching this telecast. I hope you're all well. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, we're conducting this meeting remotely via technology. As a result of the governor's emergency declaration and his temporary adjustment to the Brown Act, we're able to continue with city business while also protecting the health and safety of our residents. In system with his direction, we've asked that all public comments be submitted in advance of the meeting. As we get to each item, our city manager will identify all public comments that have been submitted. The meeting is being streamed and in Villa Park TV is done normally. For those interested, it will rerun on Villa Park TV and on our website afterwards as regularly done. We've attempted to play for all contingencies, but please bear with us as we move through this process. Hopefully, we will soon be meeting in person. Until then, let's get started. Steve, I hereby call the meeting to order. Will you please call the roll?
Councilman Colacott?
You hear me?
Yeah, there we go. Yeah, okay. Councilman Rosini?
Here.
Councilman Zimmerman?
Here.
Mayor Procham Miles?
Here.
Mayor Pitts?
I'm here.
All present.
Thank you, sir. Today, I'd like to ask Councilman Colacott if he will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please stand and place your hands over your heart and pledge allegiance.
The United States of America.
To the Republic.
The Republic stands.
Nation.
Nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate it. Now, I will call for the lottery drawing for the fireworks stand at Villa Park High School. So y'all pardon me for a moment while I adjust mine so that my lovely wife can help me with So the city Villa Park has completed the review of two applications from Villa Park Gridiron Boosters and Villa Park Martian Spartans to enter the fireworks sales lottery for the booth at Villa Park High School. I will now select from among these two qualified applicants using the lottery draw.
Let's go, Lizbeth.
So, congratulations to Villa Park Martian Spartans, you won. I would like to use this time to remind everybody to celebrate. There's the other one. I'd like to use this time to remind others to celebrate the Fourth of July safely and any and all used fireworks not certified or safe and safe by the California State Fire Marshal are prohibited in the City of Villa Park and will strictly be enforced. Now, we'll hear from our partners and our council members. First up is Orange County Sheriff's Department.
Good evening, Mayor Pitts, city council members, city staff. Thank you for having me here tonight and hopefully we can all get back together again soon. So, um, let's see, for May 2020, our monthly report, again, we're pretty lucky in the fact that it was really slow for us as far as calls for service. We just want to remind people to continue to be safe, continue to be vigilant, especially when they're getting packages ordered and delivered to their house. That seems to be a trend that's going on in areas around Villa Park. We haven't had too many issues in Villa Park, but definitely chemical steps are a very popular item right now. So we want to make sure that folks are tracking their packages, know when they're going to be there and have someone at home to pick up the package or arrange for someone to monitor their deliveries if possible. So this last month, we had one part one crime. It was a residential burglary off of the 10,000 block of Camden Circle. And this was a residence under construction where the suspects entered through a garage and took some construction equipment. And that one's pending investigation at the moment. We also had a total of 167 other calls for service during the month. We had one traffic accident and that was on the 27th. It was a non-injury hit and run and it was related to some suspects who were actually committing a crime in a neighboring city and were cleaning the area and hit another car and then fled that scene on foot. Fortunately, nobody was injured in that incident. So we had, uh, our staff was pretty much kind of laying low because of COVID-19 also. So no traffic or parking citations. We were again also like most people trying to limit contact as much as possible. So we didn't have any traffic or parking citations issued at this time. That will probably change next month. And that is all I have.
Okay. Well, thank you. We appreciate your service. Any questions, anybody? Okay. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Orange County Fire Authority. Steve?
Good evening, Mayor Pitts and council. Last month in Villa Park, we had 32 incidents and 94 units were called in to assist with those incidents. Our call volume has dropped throughout the past couple of months with COVID-19, but we noticed our call volume starting to increase as we continue to open up throughout the county. As far as significant calls, there was a hazardous condition standby for hazardous material incident, but it didn't turn into anything of, anything major. As far as this month, June coming up, we're looking at fireworks safety month. A lot of cities are changing whether they're going to allow fireworks. So I would encourage the citizens to tune in and see what we're going to do here as a city. But by only these safe and sane fireworks that are approved by the California State Fire Marshal, make sure you light the fireworks outdoors in a clear area and a safe distance away from people, homes, vehicles, as well as any found materials and vegetation. Don't consume alcohol or drugs when you're lighting your fireworks. Light one firework at a time and never relight a firework that is a dud. Always try to have a bucket of water close by when you're lighting fireworks and also, if possible, have a garden hose close by to use in case something does catch on fire prior to calling 911. Never point or throw fireworks at anybody. And 50% of firework injuries occur to people under the age of 20. In case of an accident, again, call 911, run cool water over the injury and in case of an eye injury, do not rub. These fireworks can cause very, very considerable life-changing injuries and consider using alternatives such as glow stick or confettis or peppers or even, I'm sorry, poppers or colored steamers. And then I have a phone number here to call anonymously for illegal or dangerous fireworks. That number is 714-538-3501. And that's all I have in the report.
They should call that in lieu of the sheriff's non-emergency line?
I believe that is the sheriff's non-emergency line or one of their lines.
Okay.
If you recall, Mayor, that we have an extra sheriff on duty that we are, oh, those three days right around the holiday there. And so we will have multiple sheriff's deputies patrolling and they should be called and we can get out there right away.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Any, any comments or any questions from council? Okay. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Steve, we have anybody from Villa Park Library?
No, just a report. I spoke to the county. They have no real definite idea when the library can open because of the social distancing requirement. So they're still working through and, and kind of figuring out grappling with the state instructions. I believe it's going to be stage three or, or so. So it'll be a little bit, a couple of weeks at least before they can open.
Okay. Thank you. Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control, Mayor Procham?
Yes, sir. Okay. We had our budget meeting last Wednesday, the 20th, and budget was approved. I'll explain a little about that. And then our regular meeting, albeit Zoom, on Thursday. One thing I'd like to say is Vector Control, Rick Howard and, and his staff have done an amazing job. Not only is it balanced, but very little change. The only change was due to some part-time employees that are being transferred over to full-time because they are expecting a very heavy mosquito season. And so they're anticipating by adding, well, they aren't even really adding staff. They're just taking some of the part-timers and moving them to full-time. And I think it was about a $70,000 increase to the budget. As everyone knows with the property tax, they estimated a no-growth increase anticipated for the 2021 budget. So they're kind of anticipating the worst. Also with the assessment districts, assessment one is that mosquito assessment stayed unchanged, relatively unchanged as far as increases. But the revenue from it has increased only due to increased housing units that have appeared in the cities. And then the assessment district number two, which is that red imported fire ant, that was something that was voted on by the voters years ago and can be increased not more than 3% per single-family unit. But the board unanimously voted not to increase that this year. So that assessment disdain came at 770 per benefit unit due to the problems with, you know, the economy and whatnot. One thing, we did have a resident that called and had noticed some serious activity in a local area here in Villa Park with mosquitoes. So contacted me, contacted the city, city contacted me. I spoke with the director and then our service rep, who was very responsive, came out. And actually, the area that was mentioned did not have the issue. It was actually an issue that surprised, excuse me, surprised me and I think the homeowner. So we all talk about standing water and check the standing water and if there's a fountain that's not working or a pot or a plant or something that can hold even, you know, a couple of centimeters worth of water. Well, there were several of the biters, the 80s, that were in a very beautiful, working, flowing fountain in a resident's yard and had no idea to even check it because it was not a stagnant body of water. So one thing I'd like to point out is that I think we've ingrained in our heads about standing water, standing water. But we should all start checking also anybody that has those fountains because there could be a little area in the fountain that does not get the movement. And our field rep treated it right away and, you know, no harm, no foul as far as, you know, didn't miss anything. But very interesting fact that they thought it was this area of water that was kind of in this runoff kind of staying there, which had no mosquito larvae in it at all, but it was actually on its property and surprised everyone. So I'd like to reinforce to check all bodies of water, whether they're beautiful and, and flowing or whether they're green. So and if there is an issue, please reach out to me. Vector Control, mosquito vector control has been extremely responsive and even though with the COVID, you know, they come out with precautions and whatnot, but definitely took care of that and it was obvious. So that was it.
Mayor Procham, question for you. When is, when is the actual peak mosquito season?
It's going to be in the summer and into the early fall. They're anticipating a heavy, heavy mosquito season. On that note, they have not found any West Nile virus in any mosquito samples that they've had in Orange County thus far, which is good news.
Cool. Okay. Well, thank you. Any questions or comments? Anyone? Okay, thank you. Orange County Sanitation District?
The Orange County Sanitation District Board of Directors is also meeting via Zoom and with 25 board members plus a large staff generally in attendance. An interesting exercise, but it's working. One innovative project that we approved at recently is a food processing facility. Currently, food waste from restaurants and also from, from residences, that material is landfilled. However, the state has adopted a prohibition on landfilling food waste, which will be going into effects. Records is also meeting via Zoom and with 25 board members. I'm getting a delay on my, my end. Anyway, the, with the, the, the waste haulers are, will be collecting food waste from restaurants and processing it separately to remove non-food materials like paper plates and utensils and so forth. And then homogenizing the food waste for introduction into this new food processing facility. And at some time in the future, they'll be giving us a fourth container to put, for residents to put their food waste as well, and that will be treated the same as the restaurant waste. The homogenized waste will then go into this food processing facility, which will introduce this material into the digesters. And the benefit of, a benefit of doing this will be to supercharge the production of methane from our digesters. And the methane that's produced by our digesters helps to generate about two-thirds of the power that's required to operate the sanitation district plants, which is considerable. Interesting project. We also had a presentation by the, our engineering department describing the projects that are going to be, we're going to be implementing over the next, let's see, next 10 and 20-year time spans. Over the next 10 years, they'll be, they've got about $2.7 billion worth of projects that are scheduled. And over the next 20 years, it'll be 5.7 billion with a B, projects. None of these projects will be in Villa Park. However, they'll improve the effectiveness and separations of our plant and the reliability of our plants and collection facilities. Of course, the sanitation district facilities have to be totally reliable to maintain civilization. So a lot of, a lot of projects going, that will be going on in the future and things are going to be ramping up in about two years.
Bob, did you already talk about the collection method for the compost material?
It's not going to be compost. What they're going to be doing is collecting food waste and the restaurants will have to separate their, their food waste from other materials and that will be collected by the waste haulers, just like they collect from, you know, most restaurants have a trash bin. Instead of putting all, everything in one bin, they'll have to separate the food from the non-materials and then there'll be further separations at the collection center like Republic has a, I believe they have a processing facility down by the 57 and 91 freeways.
Right. And the idea is that the food collection goes into the compost production that they're doing? Out of the recyclers?
Well, no, it will be going into the digestors as I described. You know, they'll, they'll take the food waste, separate it, separate the food from all other paper products, plastic products and so forth. And they'll homogenize that and it will go into this new facility, which will introduce the food waste into the digestors. And it'll be in the digestors with the other solid materials that are separated from the treatment processes, from the wastewater. And after the food waste and all the other treatment solid wastes are composted in the digestors, then it will be disposed of as compost, mostly for agricultural production. A lot of it goes to Arizona. There's some up in the Central Valley. And there's also a commercial processing facility, composting facility that produces gardening compost. I believe that's up in San Bernardino County.
Thank you. Yep.
They'll be using, it's like rendering a hog. You use everything but the squeal.
Okey-dokey. Thank you, Councilman. Any questions or comments? Okay. Orange County Fire Authority?
All right. Hope everybody can hear me all right. Good evening. And just want to recap that we haven't had this month's meeting of the record, of the regular and executive session of the fire authority that will be taking place on Thursday, the 28th. However, I did attend a meeting on May 13th of the Budget and Finance Committee. And the Budget and Finance Committee, in essence, went over what our projections are for the coming years. And we received and filed a report by Harrison Associates, the final property tax revenue projections, which despite what's going on amongst most businesses and local governments, we're actually not looking in that bad of shape. Even if you assume worst-case scenario projections, the growth rate over the next five years is actually positive. They did not take into consideration Proposition 8 reassessments, which I did request that they do, which are one-time assessments in cases of situations where your property values may go down. Furthermore, I asked them to consider variables that would include property tax projections that are significant, such as those that we encountered in 2006, 2007, 2008, 2009, where we had 30 and 40% property value decreases. Roughly 63% of the budget of the Orange County Fire Authority is, the revenue, I should say, comes from property taxes. So they will be reporting back the fact at the next Budget and Finance Committee in June. And on a couple of other notes, on May 1st, May 6th, May 7th, May 13th, and May 20th, I either had Zoom calls or conference calls with the vice chair, I should say the chair, the chief legal counsel pertaining to either performance evaluations or other confidential human resource matters for the fire authority. So despite a very, very light agenda in April, it has been a very, very busy month in May. And the meeting on the 28th will likely, I should say, will likewise be a little bit more beefy in its agenda. And I will report on that meeting next month. That's all I have. Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Any questions, comments from anyone? Okay. Thank you. Law Enforcement Advisory Committee?
No meeting at this time, but I do want to bring people's attention, our residents and those viewers that are watching and city council and staff. Obviously, the, our lieutenant charge of police services will, if he has anything to add, I would appreciate his comments. But we have seen a decrease in, in call volume in law enforcement, in most law enforcement circles, given the COVID-19 situation. But as the economy continues to struggle and a high degree of our population is out of work, it's quite likely that we're going to see an increase in crime. Couple that with some of the rather unfortunate moves by our state legislature and a few of our propositions, it's very likely that we are going to see increases in crime. I would want to echo what our sheriff has in the past mentioned. If you see something, say something. It's incredibly important to look after our neighbors, look after our friends. If you see something that's out of place within the community, please report it. I had a neighbor just this past weekend who's out of town and she called me up when something went off on her motion camera and I was able to relieve her concerns. But it was something that was a little out of the ordinary and it had to do with a solicitor, oddly enough. And I would just recommend that people, if they see something, say something. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Okay. Orange County Library Advisory Board?
We did not actually have a library advisory board meeting. I did have a question about the city schools meeting. Do, are we, do we have a spot for that at some point?
Yes, next.
Okay. I don't see it on the agenda. My apologies.
Do you have an update for both?
I do. So there was no meeting for the library advisory board, but I can tell you about a city schools committee meeting that I went to on May 18th. We discussed the plans to reopen schools on August 19th, or at least the preliminary plans. There is a lot of planning that the school district is putting into making sure that they have all of the requirements met for the city, state, federal, CDC at all levels. And also to ensure that the concerns of students and teachers are met when returning back to an environment where it's very hard to stay six feet away at all times. So there's a lot of conditions that they're looking at and a lot of options, including distance learning, which seems to have done pretty well. They've also looked at staggered starts for students so you'd have less kids in each classroom. The distance learning has gone very well so far. Our school district, I think I've mentioned, was, was pretty far ahead of many school districts around the country and really handled this quite well. So I just wanted to give the kudos to Orange Unified School District, to the superintendent and to everybody involved there. In meeting with the city schools advisory board or the city schools committee, we talked about graduation and the potential for the city to be involved if we had a ceremony for the kids where maybe the city council could be distanced but available to wave and to congratulate our graduates of Villa Park High School, which I, at least on my own behalf, fully endorsed and thought that that would be a great idea. Certainly, we should discuss that amongst the council and make sure that those who want to participate are available to do so. And I think that was, we did talk briefly about some of the projects over at the high school, the track rebuild over there. But mostly, we talked about differences in city requirements and ensuring that all of the schools were maintaining the proper conditions.
Okay. Anything else?
That was it. Thank you.
Apologize, apologize for the oversight. That's my fault. The whole new remote thing is, is new, so I'm learning.
No worries.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Chad, question on, pending that they leave, they, the state county health advisor officer leaves it up to the districts to decide whether it's continue with distance learning. whether it's continue with distance learning, um, online or, um, if they are allowed to be able to do like a staggering start like you mentioned, is the district plan, or do you know if they plan to get input from the parents to see, uh, where the parents stand on that, or is this going to be, um, a decision made solely by the admins?
So there's a combination. They are looking for, um, parent, teacher, and student input on all of these decisions. They're looking at, um, you know, e- everybody's got, uh, access to information and certainly i- it's going to vary between students about who feels comfortable about, um, jeopardizing their family or exposing themselves to, to different levels of risk. So there is a, a lot of consideration being put into, uh, what the community and what each individual is, uh, is willing to do.
Thanks. Okay, thank you. And, um, I personally would love to participate in any kind of graduation things that count here.
Excellent.
I think we all would. We're excited about that.
What, uh, do you have an update on the, uh, track situation, the track construction?
So they did talk briefly. Um, fortunately, I also get to see Dr. Miller in Rotary meetings. Uh, he gave a, a more expanded, uh, talk about how they are doing the, the multiple phases of building, rebuilding the, the astroturf and the, the actual field part and as well as doing the ADA compliance and the rest of the track work all around. And that because there's nobody out doing stuff on them, they're able to get all of that work done at the same time without having to, to stage them into multiple, um, pieces. So the work is proceeding and they are staying on track for their target dates.
Can I, um, can I ask one thing? It's really silly, but, um, is it, is it just me or is the north end goalpost tilted?
I have not seen that. I can look though.
Don't put your level on it.
I just, I, I'm sure they're aware of it. At least I, it looks like it's leaning to me, so I just, maybe you could ask just in case. I, that'd be a really bummer if they're kicking a field goal and missed on the side.
They do have a lot of expertise in, on that project. I'm sure you're looking at it.
Yes.
Uh, mayor, if I may?
Yes, sir. Yes, go ahead.
If I recall, that goalpost was unfortunately vandalized, damaged, messed around with prior to them ripping up the field, um, and it's been that way for a while. And I think they're probably waiting till they, uh, and this is just speculation, but I, I am aware of what you're speaking of and I believe that was conveyed to the district, um, a few months back and they're, they're well aware of it. Um, on another note, um, do we have any idea when the public may be able to access the fields again? Since we don't have any parks within Villa Park, I know that, um, organizations such as Villa Park Little League are, um, hopeful that they can resume play, um, assuming parents feel comfortable and assuming adequate safety precautions are put in place. You know if there's been any discussion, uh, amongst the district to allow that type of activity to can, uh, to move forward?
I do not have an update myself on the date.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Another comment? Okay, thank you, thank you. Um, Villa Park Community Services Foundation, uh, we met on April twenty-eighth. It was basically a phone conference call. Majority of the conversation was around upcoming events, Fourth of July, um, and a concert in the park and those kinds of things. And how are we going to handle, um, now that we have the COVID situation in place? I don't think there were any final decisions. I think it was more or less, um, a potential wait and see, start planning alternative solutions for those. Uh, we're looking at different, different, uh, things that we could do for the parade, um, that would, number one, satisfy those who are uncomfortable with what we've done in the past, as well as those who want to continue, uh, with the same tradition that we've had so forth, so far. So I anticipate tomorrow night, uh, we have another, uh, Zoom call. This time, we're graduating to Zoom. Um, and we'll have some further discussion about what to do. Hopefully everyone saw the posting for the video contest and I don't know if anybody had a chance to, uh, to offer, uh, a video for the competition, but if you, if you do, suggest you, uh, do it. It's a lot of fun, so. Um, but that's, that's it for the Community Services Foundation. Questions or comments? Uh, the housing legislation?
Sorry. Have you, have you received any entries yet? I, I put it on, um, my page and there was a lot of people that saw it. So I was wondering if you've had anybody enter yet?
I've not gotten an update from, from, uh, them yet in terms of the number of people that have submitted yet. Hopefully, I'll see, see that tomorrow night.
And is that, that was put on our, um, in the theater too, right?
Yes.
And was it June fifteenth is the deadline?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Yep. And I appreciate you all posting on your personal pages as well. Um, the Housing Legislative Committee, we have not met yet. Most of the, uh, work that's going on with the housing in Sacramento has been postponed due to the COVID situation, so, um, most likely as soon as things start to open up a little bit, we'll be, uh, working together. Councilman Colacott and I will do, uh, things forward with that. Uh, Bridges at Kramer Place Advisory, Mayor Protem?
So we have not had a meeting yet. Um, there is one scheduled for June twenty-fourth. I'm not, I haven't heard if that's taking place at all and if it is, if it's in person or Zoom. So, um, I believe that's right after our next council meeting, so hopefully I'll know.
Okay, any questions or anything? Steve, did I forget anybody else?
No, sir.
Okay. Um, at this time, we'll review comments from members of the public to address setting off-agenda items within the subject matter's jurisdiction of the council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items unless authorized by law. We will also be reviewing public comments on agenda items at that time. Steve, is there anyone that wrote in from the public that would like to comment at this item?
No, no, sir.
Okay. So now we will move into our agenda, agendaized public hearings. The first hearing was, is to review the way, is to review and waive the reading of full ordinance's resolutions on the agenda. I will now open the hearing. Staff, please give the staff report.
Yes, sir. This is the monthly, um, waiver that we request in order to help have, uh, expeditious and quick resul- quick, uh, meetings. And it's basically to waive the reading of the ordinance's resolutions and meeting minutes. So we'd recommend approval.
Okay. I'll close the hearing. Is there a motion on this matter?
I'm moved.
Second.
Second. Steve, would you please call for the vote?
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Rosini?
Yes.
Councilman Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Miles?
Yes.
Mayor Pitts?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
Okay. The next hearing was regarding conditional use permit twenty-twenty dash oh-two for seventeen-eight-five-three, Santiago Boulevard's one oh-two and one oh-three. I will now open the hearing. Staff, please give the staff report.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, this is the, as you, you correctly stated, a conditional use permit. Uh, it's for the restaurant currently, the Yang Ming Garden. Um, it's combined by the tenant spaces previously where China Panda, uh, used to be. And I'll let our director of planning, Ray Pasquale, go ahead and give a, a briefing on it.
Thank you, Steve. Good evening, mayor, members of the city council. Uh, the item before you this evening is a conditional use permit for CUP, request to, uh, permit the sale and serving of alcoholic beverages for onsite consumption in conjunction with, uh, an existing full-service restaurant. Um, the location was already noted, um, at one seventy-eight fifty-three Santiago Boulevard, Suites one oh-two and one oh-three, and the Town Center Shopping Center. Um, the business owner and operator is, uh, Mr. Yi Ting. And, um, as noted, the name of the restaurant is Yang Ming Gardens. Um, pursuant to the city's zoning ordinance, businesses selling and serving alcoholic beverages in the commercial neighborhood or CN zoning district requires a CUP. Generally, CUP approvals run with the land so long as the operational characteristics of a business do not significantly change from when it was originally approved. So, uh, city staff was fully expecting to find a CUP approval associated with China Panda, which was the previous tenant. Since they possess the type forty-one ABC license, which was granted to them back in nineteen ninety-two. However, after an extensive search of available city records, none was found. If a previous CUP was found, the new restaurant would have operated under that approval. However, that isn't the case and it is for this reason that we're going through this exercise tonight. Based on some research, uh, ABC license that was issued to China Panda and to other establishments in the Town Center Shopping Center may have preceded the city's requirement to secure approval of a CUP prior to the sell, sale and service, serving of alcoholic beverages. Uh, the earliest ordinance that I could find that relates to regulations established for a commercial zoning district was from two thousand four. The applicant has applied for a type forty-seven ABC license through the California Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control. Uh, this type of license is an on-sale general eating place, which, uh, authorizes the sale of beer, wine, distilled spirits for consumption on the licensed premises. Based on the submittal floor plan, Tang Ming Garden will occupy approximately two thousand square feet of floor area, which includes a casual dining area with a small bar, a formal dining area, kitchen, office, restrooms, storage room, and a walk-in cooler. Currently, the restaurant operates seven days a week, uh, during lunch from eleven AM to two-thirty PM and for dinner from four PM to nine PM. For this item, public hearing notices were mailed to property owners within a three-hundred-foot radius of the exterior boundaries of the subject property at least ten days before this meeting in accordance with, uh, the zoning ordinance. In addition, public hearing notice was posted as well as published in the Orange County Register. To date, city staff has not received any comments for or against this request. Also, uh, want to mention that city staff forwarded the CUP request to the Sheriff's Department for their review and they are in support of it. Thank you, Lieutenant Knudsen, for, uh, taking the time to review the application. Um, so based on this review of this, uh, CUP request, city staff's recommending approval of conditional use permit number twenty-twenty dash oh-two, subject to the conditions of approval contained in resolution number twenty-twenty dash thirty-four seventy-eight. That concludes my staff report and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Council members, do you have any questions for staff? Hearing none. Steve, is there anyone that wrote in from the public that would like?
No, no, sir. No complaints nor did we receive any phone calls.
Okay. Council members, any discussions? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion on this matter?
So moved.
Second.
So moved and second. Please, um, Steve, would you please, uh, call for the vote?
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Rosini?
Yes.
Councilman Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Miles?
Yes.
Mayor Pitts?
Yes.
Passes by a five-zero vote.
Thank you. Now we will consider our consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine and are usually enacted by one approving the recommended action listed on the agenda. Any member of the city council, staff, or the public may request any item to be removed from the consent calendar for discussion of separate action. Council members, are there any items from number three through ten you would like to remove from the consent calendar?
Uh, I'd like to remove item eight, please.
Anyone else? Steve, did we receive any from the public?
No, sir.
Okay. Okay, since we've had number eight, uh, number eight polled, I guess we'll vote on three, four, five, six, seven, and nine and ten. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
Okay, Steve, please call for the vote.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Rosini?
Yes.
Councilman Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Miles?
I'm gonna throw a wrench in something. I'm so sorry. I didn't talk fast enough. I had a question on number nine.
Uh, uh, what's one?
The contract with Tropical Plaza Nursery.
Yeah.
Am I allowed to ask that now?
I guess we should probably pull it.
I, I apologize.
We can pull it. Why don't we just deal with the rest of the motion in a second?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Steve, what do you want to do?
So why don't we just continue with the vote? So, uh, we'll exclude number nine from the vote.
Okay. So, yes. It was my vote.
Okay, so let's clar- let's clarify. We're voting on three, four, five, six, seven, and ten, and ten.
Yes, correct.
Okay, and everyone else is voted yes?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. So we have, we have polled number and number nine.
Eight and nine are polled.
Okay. All right, uh, Councilman Zimmerman, do you poll number eight?
Uh, I had a question just, and hopefully this is easy, but about the city schools advisory committee and how we represent the city there. I know the cities of Anaheim have their council on there. The city of Orange has their council member and their mayor going to that. Uh, and I would like to make sure that Villa Park also has somebody, uh, at those meetings. Uh, it doesn't have to be me. I, I'm happy to have that be somebody else if somebody else wants to, but, uh, I'm happy to do that and continue doing that as well. I just want to make sure that the city of Villa Park is represented there.
Just in, in background, I think the council, as for the action, removed a formal council membership. It does not preclude the opportunity for anyone to go and represent the, uh, the city. So that would be.
That's what I remembered. I just, the way it's worded, I wanted to make sure removing council membership didn't imply we weren't going. And I, I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
It, no, it's a formal membership, but does not preclude any one of the five of you attending.
And how do we ensure that one council member goes and we don't have more than us, more than that and create a Brown Act violation?
Well, I'm copied on the agenda and, and the school district copies me, so I generally check in to make sure. And then I'll obviously report to the mayor if we have any sort of conflict.
Great. Then I don't have any objection to, to, to this at all then. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Do I hear, uh, motion to, uh, pass?
I'll make, so moved.
Second? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Steve, please call the vote.
Second.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Rosini?
Yes.
Councilman Zimmerman?
I could just put up a Y. Is that the, yes?
That was a number two.
Oh, okay.
Or you could say fight on.
Mayor Protem, I don't want to hear that. Mayor Protem Miles?
Yes.
Mayor Pitts?
There's mine. I just put the thumbs up.
Nice thumbs up. There you go.
Okay, item number nine.
Okay, I had a question. Um, so if I'm reading this right, the letter from, um, Tropical Nursery, they're increasing our monthly prices. Is that correct?
Yes.
So I, um, what, ha- is there, it's just odd to me and the economy rate is that somebody's going to actually increase something on us, um?
It's a little less. It's on sixty dollars and change a month is what they're increasing. And what they've just indicated is their cost of doing business, so they have not, uh, substantially increased costs over the years. So we would recommend approval.
Steve, did that have anything to do with the, uh, increase in minimum wage?
Uh, they just indicated us as a cost, uh, well, actually the letter does, minimum wage increases, insurance costs, the cost of fu- uh, fuel, herbicide, those kinds of things. Now, fuel, I had to discuss with them and they indicated, you know, I said, gas prices are going down, so you can't, then gas prices will go up two months from now. You don't know. So that's sort of a, a, a thing. But they do have, uh, a green waste cost that went up, uh, that you recall that we're having to deal with as well. So there are some issues that they're dealing with. Uh, they're not large and for sixty dollars, I think we've. They're not large, and for sixty dollars, I think we provided very good service to the city, and so we were recommending approval.
So, just because I'm, you know, dated number, how did they come up with sixty bucks?
That was based on, it's pretty accurate, they go down to the penny about what they're doing, and so they took the cost of the thing and then divided it on a monthly basis, so they take their cost of doing business, and they build their budget from the bottom line up, obviously. So the total contract is approximately twenty, twenty-four thousand dollars, so it's a very small number, and they're pretty accurate about the number of people assigned to it and that kind of thing, so they go from the bottom up based on the number of staff actually assigned.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Item number nine?
Just one, since we're on that topic, correct me if I'm wrong, it's a three-year contract, and it can renew for an additional two years, so if there is an issue or if we see some sort of other opportunity, we can always explore that after that period of time, the three years, is that correct?
Yeah, we actually have termination possibly with the sixty days, should we feel that at any time, we can terminate, or they can terminate at any time with sixty days' notice.
Any other questions or discussion? Is there a vote? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, Steve, call vote, please.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Rosini?
Yes.
Councilman Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Miles?
Yes.
Mayor Pitts?
Yes.
Passes five-zero.
Our first item of new business is the fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Staff, please give staff report.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. The fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, CAFER for brief is what we refer to it, it's required by state, by the state each year. We have an outside contract, outside contract audit firm comes in and reviews that for us. It began, obviously, in February, and it's a very thorough review of our financial records. We received, they finalized it on April twenty-fourth, then we have various sundry things, but this is the public document that basically outlines our financial position at year end as of June thirty, twenty nineteen. We received, obviously, they apply generally accepted accounting procedures in reviewing all of our documents, and they go through all of our reconciliations and whatnot, and we received a clean report, but we're, submit, a clean report with no significant reportable findings. So with that, we would recommend approval, but we can answer any questions.
Okay. Council members, any questions for the staff? Comments? Is there anyone that wrote in from the public?
No, no written comments or any phone calls either.
I do have, I do have a comment.
Go ahead.
Let's see, there's a city of Villa Park list of principal officials, just a minor correction, refers to Rosini as councilwoman, correct that page so that the document's correct.
Sorry about that, we will correct that.
Anything else, Councilman?
Yes, I see that where it is, thank you.
Anything else, Councilman Colacott?
No, that's it, thank you.
Okay, with that correction made, do I hear a motion or any further discussion?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Steve, would you please call vote?
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Rosini?
Yes.
Councilman Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Miles?
Yes.
Mayor Pitts?
Yes.
Passes five-zero.
Our next item of new business is the authorization for the city managers to sign the letter of map revision for the Chandler Sand and Gravel LLC project. Can you please give the report?
Yes, you'll recall in August of last year, the city council approved and authorized me to sign, the mayor to sign, a roadway preservation improvement agreement with Chandler Sand and Gravel, and it further authorized the city manager to sign the required conditional letter of map revision, what we refer to as CLOMAR, for the proposed project on behalf of the city of Villa Park. The, I will, with that, I'm going to go ahead and shift over to Akram and Maruz to answer, or to finish out the briefing and give you any specific details, and I'll chime in the end.
Mr. Mayor, council members, good evening. As the city manager mentioned last year, the city council approved the roadway preservation agreement for Chandler's Sand and Gravel. Also, the city concurs with the conditional letter of map revision, which is called CLOMAR. As, you know, the CLOMAR is processed, FEMA requested that the applicant prepare the letter of map revision, which is another document which is called LOMAR, with a revised floor rate as documented by the Army Corps of Engineers in nineteen ninety, and also in addition, they requested that the analysis limits, you know, to be expanded. With that, you know, they did the analysis and presented it and to the county, County of Orange, to the city of Orange, and to Villa Park. This is, the revision resulted in a benefit to the residents and some properties within the city of Villa Park. There are five properties out of six on Sycamore Circle became excluded from the FEMA flood zone map. Six one will be, it reduces the impact, still, it's within the flood zone, however, it reduces the impact, the area that is being impacted by the flood zone. So it is a benefit to the city of Villa Park residents. Those residents would not have to, you know, after the approval and after the maps is revised by FEMA, then there will be no need for them to pay their flood insurance on their property. So after this FEMA's approval of a, of this LOMAR, then there will be another second CLOMAR and also LOMAR that will be prepared with the inclusion of Chandler's Sand and Gravel proposed project. So there is still, there's several processes that is, you know, the applicant is required to do, but we are in the second process. The Orange County and city of Orange and Villa Park are requested to overview and concur each step of the CLOMAR and LOMAR. That's what you have in front of you, is to authorize the city manager to sign the letter of map revision and also the future CLOMAR and the LOMAR for the proposed Chandler's Sand and Gravel project on behalf of the city. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer, and as the city manager mentioned, Maruz is also available for any technical questions that you have.
Thank you, Akram. I would also, the, we reviewed it, Akram and I discussed this, we discussed this with the city attorney, it was our feeling that although the council had approved it, prior, there was some, enough changes that we needed to bring it back to make sure the council was aware of the changes. It is consistent with past direction, and furthermore, it provides a benefit, a benefit to a number of residents that it did not to originally. So for those reasons, we're recommending approval, and we are certainly available to answer any questions.
Okay. Council members, do you have any questions of staff or comments?
I have a comment. Back in August, I think everyone knows, I was not a fan of the project. My biology, you know, part didn't like the idea of this sand and gravel project, and I think I was the only one that voted against it. However, I am happy to hear that, and there were numerous reasons why I was not on board with the Chandler project, however, I am happy to hear that there are some positives to the project that is still going to continue on, so it's nice to know that our residents will benefit from the redesigning of the flow and their insurance will go down. So just want to make a comment that I don't like the project, but it is good to hear that it's going to positively impact some of our residents.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Steve, do we know if there will be any, the way, this project will involve a considerable amount of filling of existing pit, and do we know if any of that truck traffic will, plans to use Villa Park city streets for that purpose?
You'll recall that we approved in August, the council approved an agreement with Chandler Sand and Gravel. At that time, we indicated that they, they would do everything they could to exclude the possibility of traveling on those roads, and we were going to extract a fee for those that did on, on those that did have to travel, that did travel through it, not have to, that did choose to travel. The, the company agreed to post routes that were not through Villa Park, and they encouraged their, the drivers that would be coming there. However, they did anticipate occasionally truckloads that would be there, and the volume of that, well, there's a financial incentive for those drivers not to, not to come through here. So that's not to say in answer to your question directly that that will exclude traffic, but there is a financial incentive for people to use alternate routes, and the company will be doing everything they can to encourage that to be the case.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Steve, is there anyone from the public that wrote in?
No, we had, we did have one phone call from one of the residents, we did notify them of the change, and the resident wanted to express his support because his insurance will go down. So he was pleased that, that there was a project of benefit to him, so he was encouraging of it once he found out what it was detailed.
Excellent. Okay. Well, do I hear a motion for this, or any further discussion?
So moved.
Second.
Second, Steve, will you call for the vote, please?
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Rosini?
Yes.
Councilman Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Miles?
Yes.
Mayor Pitts?
Yes.
Passes five-zero.
Okay. Our next item of business is the approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-one Recommended Level of Service with the Orange County Sheriff. Staff, please give the report.
This is, every year, you recall, we have a multiple-year, five-year agreement with the sheriff. This is a second potential adjustment or amendment to it.
Steve?
Yes.
Hang on a second. Can, those of you who are not speaking, can you mute your, mute, please? We have some background noise. Thank you. Go ahead, Steve.
Okay, this is the second amendment to that agreement. It is, basically calls for the same exact level of service for the sheriff that we currently Lieutenant Knudsen's on here and can answer any questions about some of the details, but it is very, very specific. It is very, it's exactly the same. Our contract goes over our initial budget of five-point-three percent last year, however, they amended their budget based on rate increases and insurance increases, so it is about three and a half percent, if I'm not incorrect, increase over the, over the current budget, if you will. So this is the second year. As indicated, we have one of the lowest crime rates in the Orange County, and we largely credit that to the outstanding efforts of the men and women of, of the Orange County Sheriff's Department. The agreement does include a continuation of service, which is twenty-four hours, seven-day-a-week patrol deputy, and all the supporting regional staff that we might have, including traffic, et cetera. It also includes the continuation of a school resource officer, which we pay largely out of the supplemental law enforcement services funds that we receive, or basically the cops' funds, so there. And then lastly, I would say that we do include four thousand dollars for six additional shifts on third and fourth of, the Fourth of July, which allows us to have an extra patrolman that we talked about earlier at the beginning of the meeting. So we have an extra patrolman, so we basically have them circling the streets and helping to address any concerns of illegal fireworks at that time. Again, we are very fortunate, we have done a study elsewhere with the other contract cities, I don't remember exactly how many there are, I think there are twelve others, but in discussing with them and doing the study, it was very much concluded that we have a very good, efficient model, and that we would recommend approval, and I would say that we've been, again, very fortunate to have the cooperation, support of an outstanding law enforcement team for the residents of Villa Park. With that, I would recommend approval.
Council members, do you have any questions or comments, the staff?
I do, Mayor.
Go for it.
Steve, in the past two to three, excuse me, in the past three years, what has been the increase in the amount that we've been charged by the Sheriff's Department?
I can't quote the exact number from two or three years, I just say that this year's contract, ninety, let's see, ninety, ninety-two thousand dollars this year, a large portion of that comes from, like I say, the increase in retirement rates that are being charged for the sheriff, and then also that the salary increases that were approved by the Board of Supervisors. So these are pass-throughs. The other factor that's thrown into us is prior years, way in the past, we had a sort of a deal where some of our administrative overhead was not charged to us in a full amount, so we negotiated a deal to have a three-to-four-year, you know, increase in that, so staged increase or phased recharging of that, so we were paying our exact, our fair share of it, we have the spreadsheets to show, so we've had extensive discussions with that, with the sheriff regarding that. So it would have to be, in answer to your question, the reasons for it would be the salary increases, the rate increases for benefits, and then also the, the overhead direct charges, the catching up, if you will, that were charges that were in the past, were not charged to us, and the sheriff is sort of clearing up the books, if you will. So that, I hope that answered your question.
Yes, I have a couple more, if I may, Mayor.
Go ahead, please.
If I recall, and this is, this is a partially statement, I think we're, in the past two years, and correct me if I'm wrong, somewhere above ten percent combining this year and last year, that's a fairly hefty increase, and I understand we're playing a little bit of catch-up, perhaps the methodology that we were being charged was much more in our favor than it should have been, and I appreciate that. I, for one, will absolutely go on record and say that I don't think we could get better law enforcement anywhere at this point in time. The Sheriff's Department has done a fantastic job in the past few years from, and that's from the top down. I'm just frankly concerned that year after year after year, this number is increasing, and our budget overall, our revenue, i- is not going to be able to sustain this if this continues, and I'm just concerned that hopefully we're at a point now that we don't continue to see this trend year after year after year of frankly, something beyond what our property tax revenue can keep up with, given the fact that is our, our major source of revenue. Furthermore, I have another question here. Under Investigation Services, it says one-half of one investigation unit at eighty hours per two-week period of time. Is that the functional equivalent of one-half of an investigator charge that we're being charged for every single week of every single year, I say every single week of every single month of this entire year? Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Correct, you're being charged for that, yes. We're being charged for a portion of an investigator that's charged to us, it's not specifically maybe one person, it'll be multiple people that, at any given time, and I think the lieutenant can probably address that specifically, who's assigned.
Okay, I'm just looking at all of the bodies, or I guess it's, it's portions of deputies or bodies, as it were, and we've got point-two-four, point-seven-seven, point-five, and then, you know, on a, on a daily basis, the most important thing is, are the four... the most important thing is, are the four deputies assigned at 80 hours per two-week period of time? And obviously, that's what our residents see unless there is a major crime. I'm just concerned that there's a lot of people there, perhaps some overhead, maybe some economies that we can reduce moving forward. And then the other aspect is, with the COPS funds, I know that goes to pay for our school resource officer, and just going on record to say that Deputy Benzie is arguably one of the best law enforcement officers in Orange County. I'm not just saying that because he's a friend, but I'm saying that in personal, professional experience. He's a great community guy, he's a great sheriff's deputy. But I'm just concerned, are we sharing that cost with the City of Orange or the Orange Unified School District, given the fact that it benefits all parties?
No, I believe Orange provides their own school resource officers for the schools within their city boundaries. So Deputy Benzie works specifically the four schools that are here in Villa Park, and we pay exclusively for his services there. The other thing is, he, when the school is not in session, he becomes the deputy fill-in, if you will, that covers the shift duties here in Villa Park. So we have the benefit of his presence continually when he's not the school resource officer. So for instance, school's not in session obviously times a year, so we then pick up. The school district, and it is throughout the county, the practice, school districts do not and refuse to pay for the cost of school resource officers. So we specifically, that's, that's the case throughout the county. And I, again, we've had these discussions with the school district, they're not very receptive to picking up those costs. Again, from our perspective, it does help deal with crime and things that are happening within the boundaries of our city. And so Deputy Benzie does an excellent job, I think, of helping us deal with problems, and I can cite a number of incidents that, you know, he, we had a graffiti incident the other week, and there was graffiti tagged all through the city. He actually knew from his involvement with the school that there was an individual, a student unfortunately, that they had gotten him for something else, and he had those kinds of materials that you would be doing graffiti with. So they were able to get him, and because of his involvement with the school, they were able to solve, and not just, we weren't just have to clean up the graffiti, but he was able, actually able to catch him and deal with the problem, and that was sort of a benefit of him being a school resource officer. With respect to the, I would ask, I would answer on the shared staff, they do a time study every year. So you'll see those percentages change based on actual types of things that we have. And if you'll notice, the types of services that are listed for are investigators for auto theft, for traffic, and those are typically the types of activities that we have here in Villa Park that would be pertinent to us. We have a lot of investigators, investigation, for instance, we have, you know, burglaries and those kinds of things where they'll bring an investigator or those types of things, where there's a theft or whatever. So I think they do a time study every year, and again, Lieutenant, correct me if I'm wrong, but that study is based on very, fairly accurate record-keeping by no part of the deputies and the sheriff's staff. So those that you're seeing outlined actually are not overhead, those are actually deputies and staff that are working in the city at any given time of the course of a year. There is an element of overhead that's charged to us, and that is a percentage rate that's charged over, but that, the amount that you're seeing here is, and those services and those percentages are not that. Those are direct service applications.
Well, thank you for that explanation. I do appreciate it, and I concur again with Deputy Benzie. He is absolutely phenomenal. He has been a tremendous resource for our city and for our community for a number of years. And whether he's acting as a school resource officer or just as a deputy at large, he is, he's truly fantastic. One last question on the COPS funding. Can the COPS funds be spent on anything else besides the school resource officer position?
They can be, but it's, again, as I said, it's a supplemental services, so it should not be, it can't be your base operating services. So it has to be the extra type of dedicated services that we get. So it's not, it's intended to be supplemental to your basic patrol type of, and service activities. So it is, it is something. I mean, yes, you could spend it on other types of things, but that would not be your base, you couldn't offset your base budget with it.
Okay. I'm not proposing anything this time, but I think it's important for our residents and those that may have questions, and those that may wonder, why is this increasing year after year after year, and why are we spending money here, here, and here? And this money that we get, why is it being spent there? I know there's a lot of questions within the community. But by and large, as I said, as I started my comments off, the Sheriff's Department is fantastic, and we get a great benefit from them, and they've done a fantastic job, especially in the last few years. And I thank each and every one of them. That's it.
Thank you, Councilman. Steve, I had a question. Rate increase has nothing to do with special events, correct?
No, we actually charge out those costs to the, we started that a few years ago, one of the reasons we saw the cost going up. So the foundation will help us contribute costs for the Halloween Fest, or for the Santa tour, or for the boat parade. They, they help us pay for those cost services.
Okay. And you answered my other question, actual versus budgeted time spent fees positions, so that we can make decisions about, you know, how we pay for these resources and that type of thing?
Yeah, the time study that they do is something the sheriff deploys the staff based on their staffing recommendations. So the time study they do has to determine the exact amount of resources that are being applied to Villa Park. So from that perspective, we're getting a reasonably accurate assessment of the patrol service, investigative services, et cetera, that are being applied to Villa Park.
Okay. All right, cool. Any other comments, questions, council members? Do we receive anything from the public, Steve?
No comments or calls.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved. So to approve.
Second.
Motion second, Steve, please call the vote.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Rossini?
Yes.
Councilman Zimmerman?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm trying to look at your, I've got the gallery.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Miles?
Yes.
Mayor Fitz?
Yes.
That passes by a five-zero vote. Thank you, Lieutenant.
Okay. This one's near and dear to my heart. Our next item of new business is the contract for the City Hall AV upgrades.
Yes.
Staff, please give the report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is something that was approved as part of our fiscal year 1920 city budget. Basically, it was an upgrade project for the City Hall technology, the AV presentation, audiovisual, and the technology that we use to prepare, present, et cetera, meetings. And one of the things we, you know, if you've been in the civic, well, you've all been here, but those of you who recall our projector, we have, it's several years old, and in the terms of electronics, we are fairly limited in our ability to do some of these things right now in the chambers and the presentation. So it's difficult for us to do Zoom meetings, it's difficult to us to have call-in meetings, we've done that over, call, you know, some call-ins, et cetera. So what we decided to do was do an upgrade. We get PEG monies, which are basically revenues for public education and presentation, which must be used exclusively, we're paid to them by our cable provider. And we have about, I want to say, what is it, about $30,000 there. So we decided to incorporate that with our general fund monies and upgrade our, our equipment and technology that we're using. So one of the things that we've come to realize with the COVID is our dependence and our need for these types of things. And we have realized that we are not able to function as well as we'd like to do, and improvise and do some things that we'd really like to do. So what we did is we developed specifications, we went out to bid, we had two bid, two bidders submit bids in February. Because of the COVID, right after the bid, we were in the process of evaluating them. At that time, COVID hit middle of March, so we sort of slowed down on things and contacted both the providers or the vendors and told them that we were going to hold for it for a while, and asked if they wanted to hold, and they were both okay. Then we, as you recall, in April, we had the council, and one of the things the council decided was, because of our financial position and the need, we were going to go ahead and proceed with that. So we then contacted the two bidders, and only one of them maintained an interest. Fortunately, it was the low bid, which is very good news, that was still interested in proceeding forward, and that's with Western Audiovisual, which I believe is located right here in, at least one of their offices in Orange. They've done a number of work in the local area, a number of different city councils, et cetera. We would be upgrading our, the technology and the visual presentation material in our conference room and our, and our main council chambers. As you recall, we have no real, we have basically a TV, if you will, nothing else. It's not connected to anything in our conference room right now, and we have a whiteboard. So it is sort of precludes the ability to do some things in there that we could do and have some really outstanding presentations and material. So with that, we have two bids. The sec, the bid from Western Audiovisual is $81,000. Again, that's, we had $75,000, it's about $6,800 higher than we budgeted. But I think that's well worth our investment. Furthermore, there is some low voltage, some electrical work that we might have to have done, moving a switch here or there, those types of things. We've said $10,000, but if we got to $5,000, I'd be wildly shocked. But for purposes of here, I don't want to, I don't want to overpromise and under-deliver, I'd rather underpromise and over-deliver. So we'll come in underbudget, I think, reasonably so. But what we're recommending is we do move forward with Western Audiovisual at $81,000 contract, and allow us to have the authority to get the electrical work that might be needed, like pulling conduit or any of those types of things for not to exceed $10,000. Again, we will provide a full, our intention to provide a full accounting of all project expenditures upon completion of the project, and total project cost would be, what's that, say, $91,784. So with that, I recommend approval, and I can certainly answer any questions.
Council members, any questions for staff?
I have one question. I noticed in looking at the bid, were the components and the technology in each bid fairly similar in brand and in quality of equipment?
The quality of the equipment and the level of what they did, we allowed them to substitute brands if they have specific contact connections, et cetera. And some of them did change and come back with some recommendations and whatnot. So they made some minor revisions. But I would say the two contracts, the other, the other bid was well over $100,000, well over $100,000. So there's a significant difference. But in looking at, we used, we looked at it with our IT people, and we looked at it with our group, and we felt very comfortable that the types of things that we were seeing in the bid from Western Audiovisual would definitely meet our needs. It doesn't really matter to me from a brand name, what they're using, it matters to me, the quality and types of things that they're doing. And we believe it meets our specs. So we were comfortable with the bid as submitted.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Steve, I'm actually looking forward to it. Bring us into the...
I was gonna say, would it be out of blind to say about time?
Well, we also get a lot of input from people using the council chambers outside of the city council, so it'll be a blessing to have upgraded collaboration technology. So look forward to it.
Absolutely.
Steve, is there anyone that wrote in from the public?
No, sir, we did not receive any comments or calls.
Do I have a motion on this?
So moved.
To approve.
Okay, Steve, call for the vote, please.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Rossini?
Yes.
Councilman Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Miles?
Yes.
Mayor Fitz?
Yes.
Passes by zero.
Very good, thank you. Our final, our final item of new business is consideration of resolutions pertaining to the general municipal election on Tuesday, November 3, 2020. Steve, would you please give a staff report?
Yes, so you'll recall, this is election year. We have a local election and a general election. So basically, the council is being asked to call the, basically determine and call for an election. And then secondly, is to consolidate that election with the general election in November. So this is a precursor or the starting point for the election process. We then forward this information, these resolutions, once approved, to the county registrar voters, who will then start to work up for the various ballots, and et cetera, et cetera. So we, this is the initial process. For clarification, because this comes up, the filing period, well, the full papers can be done in July, and the papers will be due in August of this year. So the specific dates are just being finalized, and we're working with, we're actually attending Zoom meetings with the registrar voters at this point to get all of the clarification. But these are the two resolutions necessary to initiate and to consolidate our election in November, which we have two city council member positions available.
Okay. Any questions or comments, the staff? Steve, do we have any external from the public?
No comments or calls.
Okay. Any further discussion? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, Steve, please call for the vote.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Rossini?
Yes.
Councilman Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Miles?
Yes.
Mayor Fitz?
Yes.
Passes by zero.
Now we will discuss the city manager report. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. This is, used to be a lot of other things that we've talked about, but now it's all about COVID. Unfortunately, that is sort of spending a lot of time. We've submitted, so where you stand, and we've been talking for clarification, the public, we have, I've been providing updates to the city council. We have submitted a FEMA claim. We have not received a response yet, but they do, it's in the portal, if you will, and everything's done automated at this point. But it's in the portal, and they are evaluating. I will indicate that our claim is approximately $40,000. FEMA would pay 75%. The remaining balance of 25% would potentially be reimbursed by the CARES Act funding that the county has, set aside $26 million countywide. Now, very candidly, I do not expect $40,000 from FEMA to be approved. But again, that's our submittal, and we're trying to keep, we've kept detailed time sheets, and we keep receipts and invoices for any expenditures we've done. People will notice some minor changes, that seem like minor, but they're a little expensive. We've done some things in City Hall to raise the size of our partitions. We've installed an infrared thermometer for people entering the building. We've, we have a UV filter that's now in our HVAC system, all four systems that we have on the roof, that cover the entire building, which help kill germs and microbes. And we have dispensers of various signage all over. So we would ask for anybody entering the building to please take note of the signs and guidelines that are posted on the front entry. The, so City Hall, it was opened on, officially, fully opened on May 18. We had always been open for building permits and business license, et cetera, automation purposes, and we had received a steady flow of people by appointments. However, we opened up, fully doors are unlocked, people don't have to call for appointments, and we certainly welcome them to come down at any time, full staff equivalent here, et cetera, are in City Hall, and obviously anxious and willing to help any resident or people wanting to do business here. You'll recall that the governor had set up four stages of recovery, I guess, or reopening. We had been in stage one, which is a very limited phase, which was take out curbside, a lot of curbside things, et cetera. Then they moved into a stage two A. So sort of the stages, the four stages got sort of bifurcated into even more stages. So the initial stage allows some curbside retail, and also essential businesses and whatnot. So this last Saturday, the governor approved Orange County's application to move into this latter part of stage two, which allows for in-house dining and in-store, and in basically retail curbside. Then this last Monday, he then approved the opening of the in-store retail. So people can go now into retail. Secondarily, the, just today, so this is a rapidly changing process, today he approved the opening, effective immediately, of hair salons and barber shops. Provide all of these, and I would caution, that all of these require social distancing and public health safety assessments. So for instance, for these, for restaurant, et cetera, business to open, they have to have done a risk assessment, and post that risk assessment, they're supposed to post that on their... And post that risk assessment, they're supposed to post that on their, the door, front of their storefronts. So those are all open, so you'll see a much more vibrant community happening in town center. Restaurants are inviting, but there are restrictions about those being indoors, what the level is, and they have to be six feet apart. So you're going to see a much less capacity restaurants than you had in the past. Orange County is one of, I want to say forty-seven counties that have moved on into the current stage. We have still a significant number of deaths and illnesses, but you'll see on the website, the health department took some initiative, as requested by Chairman Steele of the Board of Supervisors, to now record at least an estimation of those recovered from, that are tested positive, they're now recovered. So we are, our numbers are fairly good compared to other jurisdictions surrounding us. We are much more, we have a very flat curve, if you will, and our percentages are lower than, now. It's important to know, LA County has not moved in, they have not moved into the latter stages of stage two. So they still have a stay-at-home order until, I want to say August, or end of July, middle of, middle of, end of July. We are not in that stage. We are actually, as of this morning, I understand, the county is working on potentially moving in to stage three. Furthermore, churches were allowed to open as of Monday with a reduced capacity, and I believe there's a lot of discussion there. I would also indicate that the sheriff, and you'll, they'll read about it in the paper, the sheriff indicated that the health officer's order for a mask is not something they intended to, he did not intend it to be the mask police. So he would counsel and advise people, but they would not be, they would be avoiding sighting and doing anything further in that regard. Furthermore, they also were indicating that they were trying to be very careful about protesting and letting people protest and have the right for First Amendment speech. So that was something that came up. This morning, the mayor and I had the pleasure of attending the county Board of Supervisors meeting, at which time they were discussing the allocation of seventy-five million dollars worth of CARES Act funding, federal money, that would be allocated to business, is small businesses throughout the county. They basically came up with sort of an amended compromise where each district, five different districts, would get fifteen million dollars allocated to within their district toward the businesses. And they would be hiring a central project administrator or administrator to administer those grants, unless the supervisor of that respective district decided that he or she did not feel they wanted to go that route and wanted to do something different. So Supervisor Wagner expressed his clear intent that he intended to give his money out to the cities for distribution to the businesses based on a population formula. Should that be the case, the City of Villa Park, my rough estimation, we'd probably get about a hundred and fifty thousand that would potentially be put into the program the council approved for the Business Recovery Grant Program for small businesses. While that is not the dollar amount that I was hoping for, it is certainly a start. There are a number of other buckets that we're proposing to see, to search. But again, we are, you've got to start somewhere, and at this point, a hundred and fifty thousand will certainly be welcome to the small businesses in Villa Park. So we are in a position where the volunteer committee has pulled together guidelines. So it was believed, and Supervisor Wagner will be having a meeting tomorrow morning, tomorrow afternoon, with a representative from the council on each, each city. And he, it was his hope that the county would get that money out to the respective cities in the third district, Villa Park included, possibly as early as Friday, with the idea that they would also have to sign an agreement that would allow us to, that would say that we're going to spend it according to COVID CARES Act guidelines. So we could be in a receipt of monies to proceed forward. So should that be the case, it would be my intent to come back, hopefully, in June with recommendations from the recommend, from the committee to be able to get the money out as quickly as we can to those businesses. Again, our focus is the businesses and getting our economy up and running. That basically includes, I'll let the mayor, because it was quite an event this morning we went to. There were over ninety speakers for our item, and there were, the item before had about seventy-some-odd speakers. And I'll let the mayor address, because he did actually speak. I, I was sort of in the peanut gallery, be able to sit and lobby and watch on large screen TV and listen to people coming and going, et cetera. So with that, that includes my discussion of where we are. I'm certainly able to talk about any project that you might have. We are continuing, as you can see on our agenda, with a lot of other projects and things moving forward. But that's in the interest of gravity, I'll stop there.
Any questions for Steve? Steve, I might add that you weren't in the peanut gallery, my friend. As much work as you've been doing behind the scenes to help us gain this, gain access to this money with the various supervisors and their staff and the county exec and everybody else. I got to tell you all something, this COVID-nineteen situation is, is put a lot of workload on your city staff that we don't normally have. I've witnessed it because I've been a part of it. There are a lot of meetings at night, there are meetings during the day. Steve is on back-to-back conference calls constantly with various entities around the federal, state, and local levels. The day was really, really interesting. I mean, I have to add to what he said. Thirty, thirty-two mayors in Orange County attended the meeting with the supervisors to lend our support for Don Wagner to provide the city's direct access to the money. Started about nine-thirty, and I don't think, I don't think it ended till a little after one today. And the decision was to evenly split the money. I think we, we had all been a proponent for, you know, just giving the money out, the seventy, four seventy-five million to the various cities for disbursement. But I think some nonprofits and a few other entities are going to benefit from other supervisors other than Don Wagner, who has been a very supportive advocate for the cities and helping us with our small businesses. And I hope that everyone on the council will reach out to him and thank him for all the support that he's given us and also for our city businesses. Steve, I got to tell you, you work a lot of long hours, you burn candles both ends, and we can't tell you how much we appreciate all that you're doing for the city to stay on top of all these COVID things and make sure that we're taking advantage of as many things as possible to benefit our citizens as well as our businesses. So I want to thank you for that. Okay. Now it's time to hear from individual council members on information items, starting with, let's start with Councilman Zimmerman this time.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. And I wanted to wish everybody a happy belated Memorial Day. I know that it's a time to pay tribute, and I wanted to make sure that we, I'm sure we'll, we'll hear more about that from each of the other council members as well. And then I guess just dovetailing off of Steve, I'm sorry, I just wanted to say off of that, there are some, let's say disturbing trends out there that in some cases can be shaming the use of protective equipment. And I'd like to discourage that. I'd like to say that whenever you see somebody wearing a mask or being conscious of the distance between two people, that staying safe and keeping other people safe is always a kind-hearted and generous thing to do, and that everybody should be doing it. It'd be, it really isn't any harm in staying a little bit further away and protecting yourself using a mask. So I'd just like to encourage that for everybody to stay safe, to consider the thoughts of others, and to be generous to everybody else around you. And that, again, there's no harm in doing it. It really is just a helpful community thing to do. I think I'm gonna, in the interest of time, cut that short and pass along my time to others.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Racini?
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to thank Steve and the staff for the incredible amount of work they've been doing in the past month and obviously ever since COVID-nineteen hit. You know, whether it's phone calls early in the morning, late at night, or as we recently had on the weekend, I can't thank them enough. Furthermore, I want to thank our veterans. A lot of people celebrate Memorial Day, spend time with their family. But I would encourage everybody to think about what they did and what Memorial Day means. If anybody in your family or any friend or a neighbor served in the military, please reach out and thank them in a meaningful way. Thank them for their service. There is frankly a huge debt of gratitude that I think we owe our veterans, and it's, there's nowhere near, we can't possibly repay them for their, for their service. And I know I've got quite a few veterans in my family, and I'm so very thankful for their sacrifices that have given us the opportunity to have what we have now. As I previously mentioned, I attended numerous meetings, mostly telephonic and by Zoom. I won't get into all those details. But I'm thankful to see that everybody here is healthy. And I pray that the six cases that we've had in Villa Park remain only at six. That's six too many, but you know, let's continue to social distance. Please be thoughtful. Please wear a mask when it's appropriate to do so. Follow our health officer's guidelines. And certainly, there's no, there's no call for shaming people if they want to wear a mask. And frankly, probably shouldn't in those circumstances until we have a vaccine or more knowledge about this virus. Furthermore, I think that it's incredibly important that our governor finally allowed us to move on to, to be of the recovery plan. Our, I don't know if I've lost video there, but there we go.
You're good.
Thank you. My phone battery was dying. I think it's, it's long overdue. I think we needed, we needed to get things back open. I think that although I'm sure being the governor is a tough job, especially at times like this, he needs to listen to the people, the people that elected him, and to make sound decisions based upon that. I'm very thankful for the work that you've done, Mayor Pitts, and the rest of the council, and that's all I have.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Councilman Colacott?
Nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Potem Miles?
Make sure I'm not muted. I think that unfortunately, this year's Memorial Day kind of got overshadowed by COVID and numbers. And I too want to make sure that, that all those that gave that ultimate sacrifice are remembered and how grateful I am and my family are for all the families that did and paid that ultimate sacrifice and for all the vets that are still with us. That's one. Two, my background like faded out, so I thank you for, thank you so much. Well, Steve, I don't know if it was Maddie or Alyssa that took the picture and gave a test. And I, I obviously need to up my skills on how to make sure it doesn't do that again. But I love the idea, and I'll try better, harder next time. And then lastly, just want to say, you know, not all heroes wear capes. And from our first responders to law enforcement, to our firefighters, to our guys in the grocery stores, our city staff, guest attendance, this COVID-nineteen has, I think, given to everybody a moment, right? And even our moms and our dads, and I know school is ending, some have already ended. And some people are dealing with finals and still trying to work, and you know, those moms and dads are heroes too. The teachers especially, just want to give them a shout out. I hope next year is different. I know it's been difficult for everyone. Our city is so resilient and rocks. And I am so proud to be a Villa Park resident. We, we have six, however, I have to in quotes, say that we have five a while back. So I'm kind of going off, we have one, because the five had to resolve themselves and no deaths in Villa Park. So just want to say, you know, great job to our residents and thank you to the staff. And I know, Robbie, you've put a lot of time in, a lot more than if this wasn't the circumstance that it was. And I just, you know, I agree with Councilman Zimmerman. Everyone needs to recognize that people handle it differently. And some people may agree with masks, some may not, but it's the, it's the respect- And some people may agree with masks, some may not, that it's the, it's the respect.
Any better next time?
Mayor, if I could just interrupt, we just got word that our, the power, one of the technical difficulties in our room, the, the Zoom, the, the computer we're streaming on is, just lost its power. So our, unfortunately. Yeah, there's a good reason right there. So we, unfortunately, I'm not sure exactly what we'll be streaming, but this will all be included on the, we'll reprint, run it on YouTube tomorrow, but I'm just sharing that. That's sort of a, one of the technical glitches that we run across here with this building and the way it's set up. So my apologies, but I wanted to make sure you're aware.
That's, that's no problem. Any suggestions from our council members or anything for our next meeting? Including Todd and, and everybody else in attendance?
Well, we just fixed the computer here, so we're back upstreaming, so that was good. You know, on the little side, Steve gave the update, but we track the executive orders every day and update staff accordingly, and then you get updated. So as Steve mentioned, it is a daily, if not hourly, changing scene. For example, as Steve mentioned, today, the governor opened up hairdressers and nail salon, subject to certain restriction. As of yesterday, that was stage three, and nobody was even thinking about that. And then the governor just said, well, you, you can open now. So oftentimes, there's not much rhyme or reason or logical consistency. It's amazing how the science changes 24 hours. I'll let other people comment on that. But we will keep tracking and move apace. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Todd. So any, any other suggestions? Just let us know if you, if there's something we could do better for the next meeting. We're all learning how to use this new technology and this new way of meeting. We've been so used to traditional ways of doing things for so many years and so, so long that, you know, these new things kind of have glitches every once in a while, so we'll try to make sure we improve every time we do it. So without any further to do, we'll adjourn the meeting until the next city council meeting on June 23rd, 2020 at 6:30 PM. Thank you all for being here and for participating. Have a safe and good evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Well run. Stay safe, everyone.
Thank you. Good night.